All right, good evening to everyone. I call the June 4th Mount Vernon Council Meeting to Order. I'm not aware of any changes to the agenda. Just a reminder to you of that revised agenda that Chris had sent out. It involves the resolution, but otherwise I'll entertain a motion.
Approved. Approval of the agenda is presented. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Motion carries. Next item, Communications. Does anybody that would like to address the council? If so, please step forward, name an address.
Good evening, Mike. Is this on?
The mic is not on. It should be a red button.
And there we go. Thank you.
My name's Brad Olson. I'm a lead county supervisor. We have five districts. We're going to three. I've now represented Mount Vernon prior to this. And in my district, the district that I currently have is Marion, central, up to Central City, and over to Bertram. So after November, starting in January, the third supervising district will be Marion. And all the rest of the county, except for Cedar Rapids and Hiawatha and two precincts there right by Robbins. So I wanted to make sure that I reintroduced myself, give you some contact information for me. I'm starting to take calls regarding county issues from the new third district. So I wanted to make sure you had a way to get ahold of me. Apologize for my dress. My daughter had three softball games today. My son has two baseball games. I just finished working out, so I'm going back to my and daughter's softball game.
No need to apologize.
So if I can approach and just fasten this up, thanks for your time.
Thank you. Tom makes all of us look bad in terms of dress.
He does.
And Marty.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Olson. Is there anybody else that would like to address the council? If so, please step forward.
Hi, my name is Kristi Meyer. I live on 15th Avenue here in Mount Vernon. My family and I are residents here of Mount Vernon, my husband and our four children. My husband's not able to attend because he's volunteering for Parks and Rec tonight. I'd like to bring to the council's attention a concern I have regarding the chicken permit, the ordinance number eight, 2012A. Section two, I don't know if you want all that, just number four, the part of the ordinance that states, "By granting of the permit to raise chickens," and the application thereof, "Permittee authorizes that the city or its agents have the right to go onto permitted property anytime for the limited purpose of inspection of the premises to ensure that all applicable conditions have been met." In my opinion, this blanket statement, which is part of the ordinance and is directly part of the permit, the only, the only part that I think that's word for word, and that the permit that you have to sign, and you have to sign as-is there, "is too vague and unclear, posing unnecessary safety concerns for residents of Mount Vernon, as well as potentially violating privacy protections of Mount Vernon citizens." Some specific areas which I think should be addressed and possibly amended for clarity are how it states "city," and "city" is capitalized, "city" or "its agents." Then I think there could be some clarity there, and I'll talk about that. The fact that it just says "at any time," I think that there's some clarity that could be used there. "All applicable conditions," and then also permitted property. I just think it's vague. So if we look at the first part where it talks about the city or its agents, it doesn't say who, which agents, how they're identified, how they're screened. Could it be the lifeguard from the pool? Could it be the person who mows the lawn? If someone's coming onto my property and I don't know how they're screened, I have small children, I think that that poses some kind of risk. So I think some type of clarity. It also doesn't talk about identification of who that person is, or notification of who they are, when they come onto the property, how they should let people know. And so I think that that poses a safety concern. So I believe that as written is too vague and puts Mount Vernon citizens, especially children, at risk while on their own home. It doesn't feel safe for myself, for my family, or anyone who has, has to sign that permit as it sits. And so I think that that could use some clarity. Next, it talks about, it says "onto the permitted property," and then also "at any time." This says nothing about proper notification, so even if it's, you know, ring the doorbell, even if it's five-second notification, at least letting you know that someone's actually there. So proper notification or identification of who they are and why they're there. It doesn't talk about what's professional, appropriate way, respectful manner to, a way to do that, to come onto someone else's property, again, which I think is, poses some, some privacy issues as well as safety issues. It's, is it coming into my yard? Is it inside my home? Is it my garage? I think that there could be some clarity there. This blanket statement seems to give a lot of freedom to the city and its agents to encroach on my personal privacy and property and the safety of my family in the name of, in this case, chickens. It seems reasonable and respectful that someone coming onto your premises should at least be required to give notification that they are there, who they are, and why they are there, provide identification. There's nothing in this ordinance that states that, nor in the permit, that I, that I or anyone else that was being applying for has to agree to. So the ordinance, in the way it's currently written and being enforced, does not require any of this. Also, the current ordinance does not include any sort of limitation or clarification as to what they're checking for. So "applicable conditions" is what it says, you know, the limited, to address as applicable conditions. But it's not saying what that, that really is, or what is an applicable condition. I know in the ordinance, there's some certain things that are there, but it doesn't, doesn't refer back to those. It doesn't even, in this permit, doesn't even mention poultry or chickens at all in that part of it. It doesn't say whether we're talking about conditions for the health and safety of the chickens, of the coop size, is it the length of my grass, is it the amount of junk in my garage? I mean, it doesn't say any of that. I think that, again, could, could use some clarity. So having stated these concerns, I'll give an example of a situation that occurred, which I think highlights the, how this is vague and can be concerning, in a way that I feel is inappropriate, potentially unsafe, and highlights a lack of clarity in the ordinance and how it could possibly be improved. Last week, a man was standing in my backyard, a few feet from my house, taking pictures. That in itself is, is kind of scary. There was no identification that he was there. There was no identification of who he was, why he was there. There was no request to take photos or any, of anything or anyone on my, on my property. I was home, my husband was home, as well as two of my small children were home. I think it was fairly clear that there was someone home, because we, cars were in the garage, the garage was open, toys were out, who knows. But there was no attempt to come in and see if we were home, ring doorbell, any of that. I don't feel that the city or its agents should be allowed to, to do this and be protected by a vague, unclear ordinance, and unnecessarily vague, unclear ordinance. The way the ordinance permit is currently written puts the rights of the city above the privacy and safety of the individual in a manner which does not need to be, nor do I believe it is with the best interest of the safety of our residents. And I would ask that the city council take up this issue to amend the section of the ordinance in a manner which is more clear and safe for the residents of Mount Vernon. I bring this to you today because I did, and I know that you have an agenda and things that are listed on the agenda. When I brought it up to a city agent, they said that they did not feel comfortable bringing that to your attention as an item of agenda, which was also a little bit disconcerting that, that, you know, if I were, as a resident, were bringing that to someone that you don't feel comfortable with. But, but said that this is the time to do that, so that's why I'm here, bringing this up. And so I've tried to give a few examples of the ways that I think that some clarity could, could be brought to the ordinance and, and the permit. I'd be happy to talk some more about that, or I hope that there's very smart individuals, so yeah, I'm sure you guys could kind of wordsmith out some language that might be a little bit more appropriate and, and protect our citizens a little bit more, as well as just make us feel a little bit more comfortable. So I think the main things are, just if someone's going to come, I think, I think it's reasonable to have someone check on this. I mean, I don't think, I'm disagreeing with that. It's more the way that's stated, and that, that makes people uncomfortable, that maybe you need to know that they're there, some type of notification, that they're there, who they are, they need to show identification, and what specifically that they are looking for, so that, that we kind of know. I think that that's all. If you have any questions?
Well, it's my understanding, I mean, I understand your concerns and everything, but it's my understanding that you had chickens without, without approved permit in the first place. So that was, that's your first violation there. You actually had chickens on the property. It could be like a police officer that are seeing something being done in somebody's yard and then going to check it off. And this was the same thing. Somebody hears chickens clucking along, and there's no permit in that area, well, they're going to go investigate it.
So if, if you'd like to, I was not here to address that situation. I was here to address some amendments to the ordinance that I think would bring clarity and safety.
Which you should have done before your permit was.
I'm sorry. Which would be, which would, I, I, thank you. Please, I would like to finish my statement. I did try to do that, in fact, and so if we'd like to, we can talk about that. I did put in, turn in a permit. I did turn in the application. I turned in the fee. I have the exact date. I turned in the pictures of that. I asked them about that when I did it. That part of the ordinance, I didn't disregard that whole part. I cross off one part and said, I think something to the effect of by appointment or with notification. I don't have the, the actual copy of it, because the city said that they could not find that copy or present me back with that. I know that that was back in, for sure, I sent the email with the picture on April 2nd. I think I turned in the permit a few days before that. Now, I did not hear back. I turned in that, that permit. I did not hear anything back. There's nothing written. There was no, nothing to me that stated whether that was approved or not. And so I guess I'm not sure what someone is supposed to do in those, those two months' time. I assumed that we were fine, because I have not, and I still do not have anything written back. Now, there maybe was a phone call to my husband, that's fine, but it still wasn't, and that's what I'm sure someone will say, but that there's nothing to me, there's nothing written. I don't even know why my husband was called, because I don't think he was on the permit. It was my name, my phone number, so there's, continues to be concerns. Now, I'm not sure, I guess, I, like I said, I thought we were doing everything right. We turned in the permit, we turned in the fee, we waited to hear, we did not ever hear anything back. I still have nothing written. We would be happy to deal with that. Again, that is not the issue that I came here to bring forth.
I understand.
I came to, to bring forth, because I think that is unclear and unsafe. And the entire reason that I did not want to sign it exactly as it was, and then I added the statement of, for, with notification, is because of this, this type of situation happening. And so this situation that happened honestly highlighted the exact reason that I did not feel comfortable signing it as-is, and I believe that other citizens probably do not feel comfortable, yet if they do, they either feel sort of coerced by the, the fact that that's the only way to do the permit, or they don't do it. But I think that that's, that's a different issue.
But again, but again, as a citizen, I don't think I should have, should be able to change anything and think that the city's going to just go through it.
Kristy, definitely, definitely appreciate you sharing your thoughts with us. I'm going to make sure to keep this focused on why you're here. I will say just quickly that, and Chris can add if he needs to, but in terms of making changes to this ordinance on your own, obviously you can't do that. It's never going to be approved if somebody just wants to cross stuff out on their own and sign it. So obviously you can work with Matt and Chris in terms of making sure everything is by the, by the law. In terms of if we want to make some changes, that'll be something that these individuals up here decide to do. I don't believe we've had any other individuals in terms of bringing forward any concerns with the ordinance, but I know we don't hardly have very many individuals right now that have chickens, so it's not something that's a hot item, obviously. I think we maybe have less than five, two or three, four or five. So does anybody else have any questions for Kristy on items that she brought to our attention? I don't want this to get, for this to get off track.
Right. And again, I guess I'd like to just reiterate that, that the reason I'm here is because I, I think that it could use some clarity, verify your, it's vague, and I think that that poses safety risk in this type of situation, a safety risk to myself, my family, or other citizens, as well as trying to figure out that, that balance between who's allowed on property and what is private property, or what's the appropriate way to go about that. So, so I'm not saying that people should be able to come and inspect in, in this type of situation. It's how should they go about doing it, in a way that protects the citizens, keeps them safe, and lets us know what's going on, doesn't, doesn't violate my personal privacy rights as well. And so, again, that is a different situation than what it is, and I hope that we are not losing sight of that because of what was brought up.
Message received.
So I just want, I just want to say a couple things. I appreciate you for coming in. I'm all about communication. I do think, you know, like you were talking about, it is about balance. One of the things that we're doing, and I was involved in the process of putting out this ordinance, but every time an ordinance comes through, we're trying to put them out there in a way that doesn't restrict people too much, and yet provides what we need to do to protect the city as well. So we're, we're trying to provide balance, and there's certainly opportunities within line with the ordinances, and I wouldn't be opposed to it when it comes up, to look at clearer language. So I appreciate you bringing it to the table. I only wish that you would have stopped to think about it or done more with it when you applied for the permit, because it makes it just much more difficult, much more emotional now, because they're already on your property. And, you know, we should have, we just should have known.
Right. And I don't, I mean, I don't know what else, and maybe I should have come to the forum back then. I don't, I don't know what else until it became an issue. I don't know what else I could have done, because I thought I was doing everything right. Right, I turned, and again, this is getting into a personal issue, but not, but I turned in it, I, you know, submitted everything, we waited to hear from everything. We did. What happened with chickens?
Well, whenever there's a permit, you need to apply for permitting process. People, it's just, it's just an understanding that you need to have a permitting hand before you go ahead with it.
And that's not an understanding that I had. It's not an understanding that I think is clear, that says you have to walk home with the permit. I thought that in turning this in, I paid the fee, I thought that was the permit, and that was good. And I didn't hear anything, so I'm not sure how I would know that, that it was not approved. So I don't think that is an understanding that, that I didn't have.
Well, I'd like to offer that since this is a fairly new law, and it's like a muscle we haven't exercised many times, so in terms of the way the law is defined, as well as the policies and the, and the processes that the city carries out, very immature, very raw. We're not going to be experts at it. There are going to be glitches. That's how things get better. That's how people learn how to make mistakes. That's how organizations learn, by making mistakes, examining those mistakes, and trying to improve them. So this is all helpful pain, right? Though I'm sure we can get past and examine ways to improve.
And I, and I agree. And I think that's, that's where, why I'm here, is because I think that it is something that is, can be, can be approved of on. That's why I'm having amendments and having processes.
The way you presented everything, I thought was really constructive and wonderful, and I do appreciate it.
Anything else, Kristy? Anybody else have any questions, comments?
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to address the council? I don't see anybody else on the long row. Oh, I'm sorry. Name an address, please, sir.
Harold Vidditch, Country Club Drive in Mount Vernon. First of all, I'd like to thank the city manager for providing a new street light on Country Club Drive at Joseph Lane. According to the Mount Vernon Sun's May 17 news report, the city has amassed close to $150,000 in tax revenue for the park improvements, such as six-foot-wide paved walkways passed by the old South Psychoree. I'm sure the expenditure of $150,000 for a walking path will be greatly appreciated by the few daily walkers. However, I question the priority and the wisdom of this expense, when security and safety of the citizens should be, should take precedent. I stated in my opening remarks of the recent, the street light installation, I had questioned the city install, or I had requested the city install more than one light on Country Club Drive, as this road at night presents a hazard to all forms of traffic. Too many accidents have taken place at the intersection of Highway 30 and Country Club Drive over the past half-century, but I was informed that the city didn't have the funding at that time. The final city selection, or section of Country Club Drive to the city limits of Lisbon is void of all city lights, with the exception of the security lighting my family installed 45 years ago. The last few hundred feet has seen ever increasing public traffic by foot, bike, horse, school and college football, and track runners, in recent years, along with drag racing as well. Most of the late evenings are at night. I'm here tonight to ask that the city convert a small portion of the sales tax revenue reported by the recent Sun article. For the replacement of my present security light, we have provided for the city these past 45 years. I would even consider leaving the present light in the city, if the city would pay for the monthly billing. This is the only city light that's, or the only lighting that's on Country Club Drive, and we've provided it for the past 45 years. Until a year ago, or six months ago, nine months ago, Chris was the first one to, that I'm, that I'm aware of, that's ever authorized any city lighting on that stretch. And because it's down in the draw, we don't get any other ambient lighting coming from any other source of any sort, other than my location, which is right on Country Club Drive. We were next 45, 50 years ago, and at that time, we were in a county, and so we provided our own security lighting for our animals, which we don't have anymore. But we've had to keep the lighting out there, because the city has never, you know, come to our aid and put in, you know, any lighting of any sort. So I figure we've paid the city property taxes, we don't get any store, we don't get any water, we don't get anything but, you know, highway maintenance, and a couple of lights out there. I would like to hope that that would be to the benefit of security for the city.
Anybody have any questions, sir? Thank you, sir.
I didn't, this didn't count too well, but I have a couple of copies here to answer them, just showing the map of this where, where I got a light in, in the east, the city for him.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you again, sir. Anybody else? All right, now we'll move on to the consent agenda. Approval of Council Minutes made 21st, 2018.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. More compares. All right. Next item on, is a resolution for approval, 6-4, 2018A, ordering instruction on certain public improvements, approving preliminary planners, fixing a date for here and there on, and taking bids there for, there for, for improvements known as the Fur Street West Culvert Replacement Project. Chris?
I sent a email recently, after, I believe, last week or the week before, and I discussed the three projects that were planned for the summer, the Culvert being one, the railroad bridge being two, and then the wagon underpass. And at that time, we had talked about the Culvert and the bridge, and the bridge being the most important, but the Culvert has started to fail. If you drive out first going to the west, you'll see a nice patch. We had to fill in just to make do, so this project needs to move kind of to the fore.
Are the Culvert and the wagon pass two different things?
Yes. So if you drive out past the wagon pass, as you make the curve around first, you'll see there's, it looks like a pothole that was filled in with asphalt. You'll see a depression in the street where it started to cave in. We filled in with cold patch, but the entire Culvert needs to be replaced. And the unfortunate part about this is, is the road will have to be closed when the project actually moves forward. So I, somebody did ask me about diverting traffic. We have to give a detour that is all hard surface, so when people see that in the newspaper, it's going to look like an extremely convoluted detour. That doesn't mean that you have to use it, but we have to sign it as such, so. We knew this project was coming, like you said, but because we filled it with cold patch, needs to move sooner rather than later. And Dave's in the audience, if you have any specific questions.
Dave, is there anything you'd like to add in terms of?
I do have a drawing here that would help show the location, if that would get you a bit better oriented.
Yep. Clearly I'm efficient on one of our projects.
The both the detour that Chris had mentioned, which is pretty long, as well as the location of Culvert, shown in this drawing.
All right.
We have to go further back to Highway 13 and drop down to 30. And every intersection backed up, right, because we have to make a hard surface detour. There's quite a bit of signage that's involved in shutting this roadway down. Cheaper to pay by everyone's money.
Yeah.
Just calling it a day.
The, the good news is the project, they, less than three weeks, so.
I'm assuming less than two.
Well, I would say it could take less than two.
Is there, I mean, as long as we're shutting Mount Vernon down, instead of doing it twice for this, or three months for this and once for the wagon pass, is there any?
I would say this is what the wagon pass. I don't know. This is failing now, and generally speaking, it would have been nice to do both projects. However, we won't know or have a remedy for the bowers and the wagon pass in the time needed for this project. So the good news is when, when the wagon pass does move forward, we do have a little bit more hard surface to work with than the detours. It has outrageous.
Okay.
How confident are you in the costs? I mean, is there a possibility of getting in there and finding out it's worse than what we think?
We're looking at a full replacement, so this includes the pavement down the Culvert. We did one very similar on the same roadway, just east of here, a couple of years ago, under emergency conditions, and exactly the same construction. It was done, I would imagine, as part of the roadway by the same contractor, and the same type of failure is occurring, so we have a pretty good idea of what would be involved.
We're actually hopeful for better news. We've filled it up.
I think it's probably safe to assume Scobie Road will see a major increase in traffic.
Yeah.
And that's already a challenge, trying to get people to do 25 along that road, so.
Yeah. One of the issues, obviously, well, one we've got to shut this down, is stepping up enforcement on police surveillance, so.
Can we do proactive, just send a postcard or something to those routes that we know, like Scobie, just sending heads out, here's this. You know, just, just a, a little, so that people, you know, at least we've got a little bit of cover when somebody says, well, a thousand, you know, and we're going to call, which is fine, I welcome it, but I, I would love to be able to say that we, you know, otherwise a little bit of head to, and you're in line.
Yeah.
How far away is the Culvert from the Scobie Road, Mount Vernon intersection there?
Are you clear with the property that has a tomato sign on?
Yep. The front yard.
Yes.
The front yard.
Oh, that's.
Just past the runway.
Yeah.
Oh, I know what's up. That helps.
Exactly. That's right. That one.
Right past that little pond. Yeah. There you go.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Hey, Jamie, can I say something about Scobie Road, since I live there? Do you guys realize how narrow it is where it, Scobie comes this way, and Old Lincoln Highway goes up? Really, two cars can't even fit through there.
Yeah, that's what I'm a little concerned about, is the increased traffic there. Few times I'm on it, nobody's doing 25, I know that. And I'm just afraid that's going to increase.
Well, I'm just saying bigger trucks, there's no way a big truck and a car could both squeeze through that little narrow area between me and Crow.
Perhaps we could put up some truck and cargo signs there, try to limit the heavy traffic.
Yeah, the truck traffic, once the detour is established, should be following that. If they're not, then it's a ticketable offense.
That's not the reason why that works, though. Cut over from Springville Road and.
It'll be an enforcement.
Yeah.
Right.
Anybody else have any questions, otherwise? Entertain a motion. Dave, anything else you want to add?
Probably get this done before school starts, and then it takes three weeks of it. So, I mean, we're in the summer now, is that going to, will we make it? We're looking at, looking at bidding this on the 26th of June, and then having instruction done by mid-August.
Yeah, weather dependent.
Yeah. Ends in Long Bush. Well, in that case, then I would move resolution, move approval of resolutions, 6-4-2018A, and order construction in certain public improvements, and set a code hearing at the next council.
Second?
Marty with the second? Any other comments? Otherwise, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 All right. Next item, Mayor proclamation, proclamation recognizing June 18th through the 24th as National Pollinator Week in the city of Mount Vernon, Iowa.
Whereas pollinator species, such as thousands of species of bees, are essential partners in producing much of our food supply, and whereas pollinator species provide significant environmental benefits that are necessary for maintaining healthy, biodiverse urban and suburban ecosystems, and whereas pollination plays a vital role for the trees and plants of our community, enhancing our quality of life and creating recreational and economic development opportunities, and whereas for decades, the city of Mount Vernon has managed urban landscapes and public lands that include many municipal parks and greenways, and whereas the city of Mount Vernon provides recommendations to developers and residents regarding landscaping to promote wise conservation stewardship, including the protection of pollinators and maintenance of their habitats in urban and suburban environments, and now therefore, I, James Hampton, Mayor of the city of Mount Vernon, do hereby proclaim the week of June 18th through the 24th, 2018, as National Pollinator Week in the city of Mount Vernon, and I, or adult citizens, do hereby friendly projects throughout the community, pollinator-friendly projects throughout the community. All right, next item is, you are welcome, Mr. Tom. Next item, motions for approval, consideration of claims lists. I just received a hot off the press copy for additional claims. Anybody have any questions, otherwise entertain a motion?
I would have a motion approved, the additional claim, just a claim plus, totally provided.
Set. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item two, discussion of consideration of crack ceiling bids, inclusion of construction. Chris?
This is a second or third year? Third, second? Second year in a row that we've been trying to crack seal as many concrete streets that we have in town as possible. Wolf Martin area got hit last year, City Hall parking lot got hit. This would crack seal about thirty, just over 30,000 linear feet. Had to cost about $25,000. To give you some idea, I can't very well, I could, seal code about two blocks with that amount, and if we were to reconstruct an entire block of a concrete street, it would be close to, you know, $150,000 block, so. The crack ceiling goes a long way. We try to wait till the tail end to make sure there's enough, maybe on these stacks, to make this happen, so. With that, Nick's here.
Yeah, so just because I'm not a construction guy, can somebody explain the difference between seal coating and crack sealing?
The crack sealing is the black tarp that you see on concrete streets where they come in and blow the crack out, seal it, trying to keep moisture, prevent moisture from getting down inside those cracks.
And making the crack worse.
Yeah, it makes the, well, it actually heats concrete, you start to see the panels start to get. Seal coat is referred to as a chip seal. That is when it's first done, the first two weeks is when we receive the phone calls, but it's, why did you grab?
There we go. Oh, that's, okay, that's, okay, there we go. Your target's free undercoating.
Yes. And the majority of Mount Vernon streets are a chip seal, as long as they don't have a great deal of traffic outside of just the local residential traffic, they hold up fairly well, and they're an inexpensive way to, to maintain the streets. But the crack sealing is, a perfect example would be Palisades, as you drive down Palisades, especially heading to the east, you can see the black, it's just trying to make sure we keep at least a amount of moisture going down there responsibly.
What percentage of our inventory of concrete streets is this represented?
We got.
Small percentage.
Like, you're wanting 10%?
No.
Single digit?
I mean, I can't read these textual descriptions and even tell you.
You're saying what does the 30,000 number represent?
What percentage of?
That's just linear feet.
Yeah, 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 but, so this is, this is describing sections of road, and we have a complete streets inventory.
And not all of them are actually, not all of them are actually the concrete streets, so some of them are asphalt streets that are.
No, no, I get it.
Just wants to know how many.
So if you had our inventory streets, and they can say, these are all the concrete sections, so that's a subset of the total street inventory, what percentage of that subset is represented here in the scope of work?
I can't tell that off the hand, I'd have to look at it, Marty, but.
Is it closer to 90 or 10?
It's closer to 10.
It wasn't meant, I wasn't meant meaning to make the joke, I was simply trying to understand, what is our annual program? In other words, there's a lot of ways to think about this, right, but in my mind, I'm curious to know, if you spend whatever it is, $23,000, then, and you're doing that in a cycle across all your concrete streets, they're in a condition such that they might require that type of maintenance?
Right.
Right, then is it $23,000 every year, every 10 years to get full coverage of the streets that need crack sealing? That's the picture I'm trying to form in my mind, so if it will forgive me, that's where I was trying to go and get some sense of that.
Probably not quite to that extent. So to give you some example, Stone Brook, for instance, was completed, their newer street, so the crack sealing that we do do, there's a smaller amount of money that needs to go there. Wolf Martin was in slightly better shape, Palisades is in deplorable shape when it comes to crack sealing anyway. So it depends on where we're trying to hit in a given year.
Is it prioritized based on the worst condition streets of those that merit crack sealing, or?
Yes, or, like, even in Stone Brook, when they originally do the street, and there's a small amount of crack seal that goes into the new street, and then as we develop more cracks, because more moisture has happened, or settling from substructure, we notice extra cracks, so we go in that area, and we find a bunch of that cracking happening, then we'll say, hey, we need to really concentrate on this section. And we have maps that, now with the new GIS program, we're looking at possibly being able to put this on our map program so we can highlight those areas. So right now, it's on a paper copy in my office, so 2015, we cracked sealed here, here. You know, I haven't figured out the linear foot, but we kind of have an idea of where we're going each year, and where we got to concentrate. And it's not always just concrete streets, we're going to do some asphalt streets with, because.
Sure.
At the curb line, that'll develop, so, just, it's really preventative.
Yeah, I just thought it was worthy for all of us in the room to understand the big picture, and how this fit within the context of the bigger regular maintenance program.
Right.
Since I don't think we've had much discussion about crack sealing program in its entirety.
Yeah.
And that's all I just wanted to have a little chat about.
Honestly, since I've been here, we, we did not do it the first two years, I was, we kind of got back on board that because we're developing, you know, preventative maintenance, and it's something we need to do.
Yeah, absolutely.
And put some money towards, but, you know, so we don't have the funds to do major street reconstruction, so this is kind of a gap.
We're in a budgetary situation where we have to figure out how to prolong the life of that street infrastructure, which we have, which I think is fantastic that you're correct about it, and that's why I just wanted to get a bigger sense of it.
Both, I was just gonna say, both the crack sealing and the seal coating, as much as humanly possible, we're taking out of road use tax. The unfortunate part with road use tax is, depends on how many miles people drive in a given year, so it's not something that we could do a major street project with, so the goal being as much maintenance-related items that we can do within road use tax, the better.
It's our share of the state fuel tax, based on our per capita share of that.
Yep.
So it's population and how much gas people buy.
Correct. The DOT gives you estimates every year.
That's why I hate electric cars. That was a joke.
This is the reason that we wait, this is the reason that we wait.
Shots fired, Tom.
Towards the end of the.
I actually love electric cars, can you believe it?
We have, so the DOT will provide estimates yearly, when I estimate revenue for you during the budget process, every down during that sum, the DOT never gets to their estimates. Then we wait towards the end of the year to do this, that we make sure that we receive as much, have a better handle on the revenue that we're going to be variety through road use tax, because we do have employee wages to mod that as well, so.
It's an unfortunate funding source we can't rely on very consistently, and it needs to be rethought at the state level perhaps.
Correct.
For a long time.
Any other questions, otherwise entertain a motion?
I would move approval of the crack sealing bid, well, actually, no, hold on, I have one more question, I'm sorry. So I only see one bid here, did this follow, don't we usually do multiple bids for these sorts of projects?
The unfortunate part is there's not very many people that do them.
Okay.
Cluj and here happens to be the most responsive in eastern Iowa, there's only a few in the whole state that will come in and crack seal. Some cities do this themselves.
And this is the crew we used last year, is that correct? I just, I wanted to make sure.
Yeah, we're comfortable with their work.
Okay. With that, I would move approval of the bid from inclusion or construction for crack sealing for this one.
One second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, discussion of consideration of the seal coat program, Allo Pelling. Chris?
Along the same lines, again, if we can keep, if we can seal coat the streets that will take a seal coat, we're better off. You will receive calls, we are going to try potentially a different type of seal coat next this year. It's less the flaky rock, it's supposed to be a little less dustier. Forewarning the council, when we start these projects, these will, these will be the projects that you hear for, for about two weeks until it hardens, and the streets kind of clean themselves up, but, again, if you drive on most of the side streets in Mount Vernon, they are a seal coat now. We'll only be able to do this so much, so we can only layer seal coat so often before. However, not doing this means that we are, we're looking at replacement in areas that we can't afford to do right now, so.
Will the streets be closed while this is happening, or will people be unavailable to their house for hours out of the day?
Well, like we did last time, we sent out notifications to the affected streets. They're not necessarily going to be out hours, we just can't guarantee when they'll, when they'll be by, so we'll, we'll let everybody know that they're going to crack seal, or seal coat these days, you'll definitely not want to park on their, it's weather dependent as well, so we kind of give ourselves a window, but typically speaking, it's not even an hour sometimes if they're on this, you know, on those individual streets, so.
Any other questions, otherwise entertain a motion?
I approve. Why does that question? To the earlier point, Marty's point, this is in line with priority roads that in this...
This is in line with the priority roads that can take a seal coat.
Yeah.
There are other priority roads that cannot. For instance, if we were, like, I mentioned it before, if we were to take Palisades heading east from the intersection, we wouldn't seal coat that concrete street, at some point it's going to need an asphalt roadway to completely seal that roadway. So there are certain streets that we wouldn't seal coat simply because we would have to tear it up right away. On average, if we can get a seal coat to last about seven, seven, eight years, we'd feel pretty good about it. And again, you go back and look at traffic patterns on individual streets. We did seal coat Palisades heading to the west simply because we knew construction was company, we didn't want to put in a brand-new street or bring in a brand-new street to you until we know what, how the traffic is going to change after the bypass opens up, so. So I don't want to sit here and say, you know, what's on the seal coat is our priority, it's our priority as far as what would take a seal coat.
All right, given that, I move to accept the bid from Allo Pelling for the seal coating of the roads in two hours.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, discussion of consideration of police department computer replacements.
You have a memo from Chief Shannon, I did threaten to tell him to have you table this just simply because he sent me pictures from vacation all day. So, he has having glitches with his computers, and then he need to be replaced. Total package, I believe, that he was looking at is $4,782.
I thought it seemed reasonable for what he's getting, and I appreciated the fact that he cut back where he could, for example, he's not getting all the monitors, you know, he made something, he looked like he worked to make some decisions of, you know, where would really lead.
I believe he said he had about $7,000 in the budget, so he probably could have, but I think it's more, you know, trying to maybe get them in a rotation if possible.
Entertain a motion?
I would have a motion approved, recommended $4,782, recommendation for updating police department computers.
Please second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, discussion of consideration of final envelope, Mr. Burge family, Community Wellness Center.
So I sent you a two-page memo along with a lot of exhibits on the building, and gave you kind of three scenarios. The third scenario, the most expensive scenario, obviously, being the one that we would like to pursue. From a budgeting standpoint, fundraising-wise, we're at 8.4 million now instead of the 8.3. We have a hefty, and I mean a hefty contingency in the number, I'm not going to say it, in case people are, are watching, but we have a contingency that we feel extremely confident about, even more so than I've ever put in a new project that I've done in the past. Part of that is because we're still questioning steel prices, but the other part is to be hopefully pleasantly surprised on bid day, if it's not. But the goal here with the building is to take advantage of the one single story that was on the building to begin with, that's what above the locker rooms. One thing that we've heard that would set this building apart is having some turf dedicated area, not only could be used for athletics, but also be used for after-school programs in the winter, so Matt's talked about inflatables, being able to have a kid today and put the inflatables on the turf floor as opposed to the wood floor, along getting, you know, potential there, so. This gives us more square footage of the building that can be opened when some of the other portions of the building are being rented. People throwing baseballs on the turf floor versus having them downstairs throwing baseballs on our floors down there as well, so.
So what, I mean, turf to me is grass, what, I mean, this isn't, we're not.
Not rubberized floors. It's, I mean, it'll be a form of turf that you would see at some of the high school football stadiums.
It's not going to glow in the dark.
It's not going to glow in the dark.
Freaking, that's disappointing.
I know.
We could work on the walls to glow in the dark.
I was like, am I the only one who is this? Yeah, so if I may explain, if I may just share with you, this, this will be the most unique, this and the client will be the two most unique spaces in this building. This will probably, in my opinion, be the most rented-out space in that facility. Anywhere from daycare activities to birthday parties to speed and agility programs, I think the school will have utilization for this, I think the community will have utilization for this. Anywhere from, you know, disc golf programs to, you know, throwing a baseball, putting a batting cage in there, getting it off the gym floor. If you haven't seen the Washington Elementary Gym Floor, what the baseballs are doing to that floor, we consider taking some turf and rolling it out in the gym and creating a batting cage there, that's going to create staff time, it's going to create work, so this is just an option, an opportunity for us to capitalize on that one floor being totally utilized as opposed to having a mechanical well inside of it. So that's, we saw it as a real opportunity to make this a really unique building, a more unique building at this point right now.
What's the lifespan of this turf floor?
So you can get, depends on the product that you purchase, but you can get seven to 10 years, if not more, depending on what you put in there, if you allow cleats or do not allow cleats, which I recommend we don't allow cleats, so it'd be, called field turf is basically the substance, and they put it all over the place in, I mean, Kansas City, Missouri has field turf on outdoor fields, and they heat it, and they play soccer almost year-round down there. That's just that unique.
I think that's what comes along, mercy's in baseball field.
Could, yeah, could be a long process, the baseball field, and softball complex has it as well, Solon, you know, if it's Solon's football field, that's basically what, what you're talking about, is the field turf. Cornell, I mean, you know.
Now, the field turf I, that you're speaking of, has little rubber granules in it.
This would be different than that.
Okay.
Great, great.
Because that would be carried throughout the facility.
Yes, correct.
There's a specific turf that.
This is an indoor turf, this would be an indoor turf, so.
So this is more like what was maybe in the Metrodome before?
Yeah, Union Dome, Metrodome.
Didn't have the.
Yeah, before they had the pellets, the rubber pellets, the recycled tires, yeah, absolutely. Those get in shoes, if you haven't experienced the Washington Elementary Outdoor Playground.
Exactly.
You haven't experienced the rubber pellets and shoes.
Yes. And the washing machine.
Yeah.
So everything is stationary.
Yeah, everything, it'll be a stationary turf, and there'll be, like I said, if there's no cleats and no tearing up of the turf itself, we would need the rubberized pellets.
Yeah, they still sew it in, it's not as long, still hurts when you fall down, because you can still feel the concrete, but, one of the things that we talked about is. One of the things that we talked about is what would be unique is for seniors, the popular game is pickleball. And a lot of them are on torches, but we can put pickleball inside this turf area because the grass would be shorter. So there's a lot of things that we could do for all ages.
You could play tennis on it. Now, the ceiling height will be at 14 feet, so it would be...
So it would take your lobs out.
Lobs would not be probably taking place, but you could definitely practice that. We've talked about indoor golf. We've talked about a lot of different things you could utilize this for. So I would be happy to provide you with a list. I can't name them all today. But just get your mind going of what you could do indoors on grass. That's what we're picturing, you know.
This would, I guess the reason that we have it on the agenda tonight is this is it. This is the last thing that we can really do with the building envelope and more or less journey the architect's goose moving forward. Now, we have the ability. We have plans. Should the numbers come in well above, it's not like we're locked into having to do this. You have options when you go into business. But I guess what staff was saying, what I was saying in that memo, looking at cost of running this facility, trying to figure out ways to get revenue for this facility, making the building as unique as possible so that people want to buy memberships at our facility. Adding this, it's a little over 3,000 square feet, I think, adding this square footage sets us apart from your typical Y's or even some of the city-run facilities that's in the I of city graphics. So I think that's what we were kind of getting at. I can't say enough about the fundraising group giving us the ability to have these problems. I think that's been a wonderful thing. And I, the most cautious architect that we have leading this project even feels comfortable moving forward with this, with the numbers that are provided. So, and he doesn't, he doesn't move off-center very, very often, so.
I'd like to run opportunities for this. I think this providing an indoor source for baseball, softball kind of complements what Perfect Game is doing on their Miracle Field and so on, up by County Home Road and so on. But outdoor fields, I think there's going to be a market for people to figure out, outside in the summer, with the ability for officials to catch us to work out in the field, things like that, on an indoor facility. And then having the freedom to, if the bids come in and just totally blow up, then we can start knocking down some of those alternates. But it's, I think, a very interesting thing to add, a unique thing to add to this. And not just another gym.
Right.
And if we can save some wear and tear on the gyms as well.
If I may add, also, you'll see on the diagrams that we're adding fitness area space as well with this change. So we'll have more ability to cater to the fitness crowd, the aerobics crowd, the strength training crowd, the circuit training crowd, aerobic crowd upstairs in that area as well. And downstairs, it'll provide another 400 and some odd square feet to do some activity programming down there as well, where we have maybe planned for ping-pong tables, pool tables, after-school type activities to keep the kids safe and busy down there as well. So.
It also matches up with a meeting that I set up several months ago at the Colonel's Foundation, actually, tomorrow at 4:30, where this would be something that would be right in their wheelhouse, so to speak, and as long as they have an opportunity to put a logo on that. But that would support indoor ball programs that would, they're in the $3,000 to $5,000 range, so they're not going to pay for the whole thing there. But it would help with my conversation with the Colonel before tomorrow.
No, but I believe that's within the range of a batting cage.
You sure have.
A lot of Colonels on it.
Anything else you'd like to add, Matthew?
No.
Other questions?
Thank you for considering.
This kind of releases the architects to go forward, you know, now that the footwork's set.
Yeah, they don't need a specific vote on this tonight, but this is my last opportunity to get in front of you to say, this is where we're going. If you want us to stop, pull us back now. Otherwise, we're going to turn the architects loose and let them start. Right now, we would be bidding in the September timeframe and awarding bid in October. So construction could start in October. And tomorrow, I do have a meeting with the school district, and we're trying to plan a joint groundbreaking ceremony at Heritage Days.
It's already done.
On Monday night. What's that?
I said it's already done.
Oh. Mayor had launched it last Friday, so they might already have it all planned out. You can work all the details of it.
That would be good.
Right when you're done with the 5K.
8:32.
So actual motion on this?
No, I don't need a motion. I just needed to see your faces and tell me either that you're okay or stop now.
Well, I'd just be, like I said, I just don't be adding too much. I've seen this before where you go in to buy a car and come out with a Cadillac when you could have got a Taurus. But, so, I mean, it just...
Until you get that bid, you don't know exactly what's going to come in. You're going to come up with this big number and all of a sudden somebody's slashing you.
And I, you know, the good news, there's enough checks and balances between here and now. We're not going to get to a point where we would put the city at a disadvantage. I think everybody was comfortable with the building prior. Again, through the fundraising efforts, we had some ability to kind of look at some things. And on the flip side, I think we would be remiss to throw away a revenue, potential revenue source if we can make them happen within the numbers that we've got.
Right. Blood and bone.
One of the best reasons is that it improves our operating funding conditions. I think that's the part that may be super exciting.
Yes, that was the part that was most intriguing as well. And the amount of square footage that we gained for the amount, the cost made sense as well. It came out ahead as opposed to the square footage cost for the total square footage of the building, so.
This helps us sell memberships, for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matthew. Next item, discussion and consideration of utility box purchase.
Alex has been hounding me for about six months to get this purchase. It's so they can carry their tools on the truck and not have to run back and forth while they're actually helping. I did ask him to wait until June to make sure that the material was in such capacity where this would work. He actually saved money with his operating budget so he could buy that. And it wasn't a capital improvements. It just kept trying to push it off a little bit. At this point, he said it would benefit them as far as being able to not have to drive back and forth to the facility and their jobs saved.
Do you love more lean than that?
So this essentially replaces the entire bed or sits within the...
Sits within the bed.
Yeah. It must be nice.
That's right.
Okay, well, and it has, it's heavy-duty and has obviously locks on it because we have quite a bit of expensive equipment that will sit on it while it's there. Has some specialized compartments because they'll use it for water as well, so they have water meter areas and things like that. So, yeah, I mean, they definitely cornered the market.
Does it, and this can be lifted out, taken out, and truck used for other purposes, or once it's in, it's in?
Could it be lifted out? Yeah, it would take a lot of work.
So, I was just wondering. I mean, if you're, if it can, I've seen those ones where it'd be like plumbers' trucks that just have the whole unit taken off.
I think Alex's idea is to get this truck more outfitted like the truck he drives. So currently, Brian's truck has toolboxes that are up high, like above. So there's maybe three boxes per side, and he can't get enough tools in those along with, it creates a sight problem when they're trying to see out of this truck. So with the utility box, you take off the old box of the truck and set this on there and bolt it on. It stays on for the life of it.
So you do take it back?
Yeah.
So as the truck breaks down, you can move it to another truck?
Yeah, you could.
I was under the impression that you've set this inside the bed.
As long as...
Yeah, same, yeah.
So it is like a plumber's truck.
The crazy thing makes work.
Yeah, me too, because I'm picturing...
More like a large electrical utility box.
Okay.
Alex has a crane. I don't think we're going to outfit this one with a crane, but more versatility for what Alex and Cruz would do.
This might be an example of maybe having a photo included.
I was just going to say, the future reference photos would be helpful.
Those of us working behind the...
I'll let Alex know simply because he doesn't ask for very much. We were laughing today about how much time I get to see Nick and Matt versus Alex.
I don't know if that's a good thing.
So you want to promote him?
Yes, please.
I would move approval of the utility box purchase for the Water and Sew Department.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, discussion and consideration of possible appointment of the operator one position, the public works.
Just wanted to FYI, next guy's individual envelope, take them.
So we've had a spot that's been vacated probably pretty much now, so we're just trying to get back to full staff. We went through interviews last week and found a candidate we're really happy with. Jacob Sees is his name. He's a certified diesel mechanic, which is something that currently our staff would not have on hand, so we can diversify that way. He's had welding experience. He was a certified welder. He let his certificate go because he wasn't currently doing that every day. But just brings a lot of tools and skills to the public works department that we're really looking forward to getting in on staff here and doing some more P&amp;M stuff with our trucks in-house, maybe, instead of having to always send stuff away, so.
Is he located?
He's down in Solon currently, so. And he works second shift for a bigger metropolitan city, so it's nice to steal one from them once in a while.
To his credit, he has fiancee or...
Yeah, and also, so.
He was, he is looking to get a little closer.
So a little bit of luck.
It never hurts to play that way.
Well, good.
What's the plan and when he will start?
I think he's ready to get off that second shift as soon as possible. So he's wanting to put his two weeks in if everything goes good tonight, so.
Do we need to do anything?
No.
No, it's just, I like to keep you informed when we are making the hiring decisions.
Give him a call right now?
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. All right, next item, the nature park trail, discussion item. Chris?
Since we had the first discussion regarding this trail, Matt and Dave have met with property owners that would be affected by the construction of this trail. There was enough comments received that I asked Matt to put this back on as a discussion item to allow them to voice concerns and then answer questions by both Matt and Dave while they're here. Prior to bringing this as a public hearing as part of an entire project. So if there's changes indicated by the council, too, you're going to do it as a discussion item rather than going through the entire publication process, so.
I just, there was an email after the last meeting where this was discussed. And I didn't CC everyone because I was stating an opinion, et cetera. And I felt that I'd rather steer away from discussion or the appearance of discussion within email, including council members for matters of ethics. So, but what I had expressed to you, I know Matt was on the email and I think you were, Chris, and perhaps Jamie, was that it occurred to me after leaving the last meeting where I had expressed some concerns about replacing this building sidewalks in front of residents, that a supporting perspective related to a different approach would be that, I believe it's true that our trails plan still includes a trail, our officially adopted trails plan, includes a trail that runs along Fourth Street and terminates in that park. Is that correct?
It actually would run through the park.
Okay, right, so it goes at least to the park on Fourth Street South.
Correct.
Right. So then when we're building a trail on the north side of that, it just seemed to me that it made sense to, rather than go in front of homeowners' houses, to run through the park and get to where that trail is supposed to be, even though that's not the shortest path. You could go from that paved road that's, we call a trail, that used to be a street, and just go straight shot over. That's perhaps a little bit less. But my point is, it helps us avoid this issue of creating a sidewalk in front of residents where there isn't a sidewalk and the resident-related issues and differences in agenda and opinion, right? So I'm just hereby floating that option again as a way of putting to rest any concerns by those citizens. Putting back on the back burner any potential of requirement that they put in sidewalks where they don't currently exist because that is, has been backburnered, and this kind of brings it to the forefront and all the related tensions come with it, right? And I think overall, it fits with our trails plan. So it's kind of like, feels like the right solution to me.
Yeah.
And I don't mean to disrupt your, and I'm not throwing you a curve ball.
No, absolutely.
Just being straight up, because I've been through all this process, right, for years and years. And I feel like we have an opportunity to live up to a point, and this feels like a diversion.
And that plan changed a little bit ago when we put the disc golf course in. When we put the disc golf course in, we have two holes that go across where you would come straight across to four from the currently existing trail that's up there now. Now, surely we could wind it to go on the backside of these properties, but...
Well, I don't understand how disc golf can't be played over bands of concrete. I've done it many times.
Well, it can, but if you have somebody riding a bike and somebody going to frisbee, they don't mix.
Well, there could be people walking, snoozing in the grass, sunbathing, picnicking. Sightseeing, birdwatching.
Yeah, yeah, all of that.
But to your point, I mean, all of that is true, but when the city puts in a sidewalk and we're telling people here's a specific place for you to walk.
Well, it...
And I'm not saying, and I'm not saying we could put a sign.
Thousands of golfers, pedestrians, all over every bit of that place, and I'm very careful not to hit them.
I'm just saying there's a difference between people sunbathing in the, you know, in the grass and people walking out and pulling the walk.
Yeah, absolutely. If council desires to take that approach, I'm all for it. Just our thought process was, no, our thought process was that the disc golf course gets used quite a bit. So having a flying disc and having somebody riding a bike becomes an issue. You don't see a lot of trails on golf courses, public trails going through golf courses for reasons. There's flying objects, and there's obstacles, and there's, you know, if you have headphones in and no helmet on and you're riding, there may be an incident in that case. So that's, that was our thought process, is not to take it directly through to the Fourth Street entrance, but to direct it to a different path. And one of the paths that was located was that south edge of Third Street going all the way down to connect to an existing sidewalk on a property.
And all I'm saying is that as soon as you decide to do that, you raise the tension around sidewalks in front of residents without sidewalks.
Absolutely, that's what we discussed.
Which is a political minefield.
Absolutely.
And I would prefer to avoid those myself.
Understood.
I don't like talking. Hey, Danny.
So we posed to let the individuals know that the six-foot trail was planned. The city would pay for it. The city would maintain it. If there was any other option available, some thought, you know, four-foot sidewalk would be adequate. Well, as we explained to them, four-foot doesn't exist anymore in a new development. So it has to be five-foot because you don't want to have a turnaround every 200 feet. So five-foot is what is in our ordinance that we're putting in in new developments or new sidewalks that we're putting in. So when we showed them that a six-foot trail was not as large as a eight-foot or 10-foot trail like what we have at the Trump line, the concern stopped a little bit. There still are concerns, absolutely. There's one neighbor that specifically does not want six or five. He wants four, even if we explain to him that it doesn't exist anymore. So yes, and there's several individuals here in the audience tonight that live along that path that are going to be affected by it that, you know, I hope you give an opportunity for them to share their story with you. There are several neighbors along that trail that are going to be affected by some existing landscape-type opportunities that they have put in, either on city right-of-way or that are going to be close to the trail where the new trail is on their own property. And Dave and I have talked about those, particularly a couple of them. We can negotiate to move the path of the trail a little bit to accommodate that. Some of them, we're not going to be able to. One in particular, there's a bush that's going to be right in the way that we've offered to negotiate moving that bush or getting another bush and putting it somewhere on their property because it is located on their property, but it's going to be affected by the trail. So anyway, that's our, that's our story. That's why we're here tonight.
You have an other man?
Yeah.
The one question that I have, though, if we do take the trail to four, if we still run into... run into the issue of dumping onto a street, unless we run sidewalks on Ford as well, there will be at least two property owners that will be affected there as well. Like I said, this is obviously why we're having the opportunity to have this conversation, but if we, I guess what I was trying to get at, Marty, was if, that one block stretch at Ford between B Avenue and Nature Park does not have sidewalks as well. So we, unless we dump them into, into the street, dump the trail into the street, we would be faced with the same issue there as well. The other issue on Ford is the fact that if you look at Ford, there's, if we were to continue with a south-side sidewalk on Ford, there's a substantial amount of landscaping that is currently in the right-of-way that would have to be removed to replace the sidewalk there likely. No, let's tell them.
Ford is the, where the school stop sign is on A1.
The reason we're trying to get them to Ford is because of the school stop sign and any of the children that happen to use that sidewalk, we're trying to funnel them to that intersection.
Be safer.
Yes, that's the crossing, it's designated, it's a trail crossing.
Safer out to schools is the designation connection.
Well, I, I, I still propose that we price out and consider the alternative of just routing as close as possible to the property to the west that extends into the triangle that's generally otherwise the park, and then just, just run it as efficiently as we can over there and put up signs that say, watch for flying discs, travel on the rest and whatever.
Is there anybody that would like to address the council, please?
Sure.
Name an address, please.
Paul Raymond, we live at 208 Third Street Southeast on the map, is upper left, Lot Three, right on Third Street there. And I'm actually the guy that emailed council about a month ago. We had rumors about this happening and all of a sudden we saw an article in the paper and we hadn't heard anything about it, so I emailed council and also Matt, and Matt got back to me right away on Saturday night and kind of explained everything, so I really appreciate that. And then a couple of days later, Matt and Dave came out to the neighborhood and explained things to us and presented this with Matt. We share a driveway with the neighbors right next to us in Lot Two, and according to the plan, the trail would end right at our driveway entrance there, and, which is the access road in the middle of the block. And they explained to us that our, the pad to the driveway or the entryway, that would be redone as well. We have some, on our sidewalk, we've got some sections that aren't level, so we asked about what, what would happen to our sidewalk, and Dave explained that they could probably do an estimate and then at our cost, we could have that done, which sounded okay at the time, but then we started to think about it. Our property would basically be the gateway, if you will, to this, to the trail, and everybody else to the east of us would be getting a new sidewalk or a new driveway and stuff like that, whereas we would have to pay to, you know, make our sidewalk nice for people to get onto the trail, which to me doesn't make much sense, so. Matt suggested, or he said there's a possibility that the trail could get extended all the way to A Avenue, which goes, you know, past our property into the next property, and if they, if it stays at that six-foot width, that that would be a city cost issue or whatever, is that right?
Yeah, I mentioned that that's an opportunity for someone to make a decision on that.
Okay.
I wouldn't be able to make that decision.
Right, okay. So, if that was the case, I mean, I guess we would ask the council to consider that to extend to A Avenue. The other positive to that is now you have a natural entryway from the street, from A Avenue instead of right in the middle of the block. I think people would be kind of confused, do they get in halfway down the street, get on the trail on our driveway, or do they go down half the block that's four feet wide sidewalk and then all of a sudden get to our driveway and then it's the trail? I think just A Avenue would be a better entryway for the trail as well, so that's kind of our input. My wife, Kristen's long, do you have anything else to add? Okay, so it's, that's kind of like what Marty was saying, now we're getting people's issues with their property and stuff like that. We are not against the trail by any means, we think it's an awesome idea, wherever it's, if it's Third Street, Fourth Street, whatever, but as far as our property being on the edge of it and kind of the entryway to the trail, that's just kind of the concern that we have.
Makes a valid point.
Yeah, under 32 feet more.
Can I just comment on this issue?
Yes, please. Name an address, please.
Barbara McLean, I live at 312 Third Street Southeast. So it's the last house before...
Nature Park.
The nature park, yeah. We're sort of surrounded by the nature park there. Now I forget what I was going to comment about. Oh, I know. We have snowmobilers that don't know that there's an exit on the nature park where they can get out into the street, and they come across our lawn to go on our driveway, which is plowed so they can see there's a driveway there. I don't know if you can put signs up there, or if putting all this in there is going to make a difference with that, or, you know, I don't mind a si, a trail going across. But I guess I don't really care for people going up our driveway and across our lawn, kitty-corner, right across the garden.
Well, there shouldn't be snowmobilers going through there.
We have had issues with motorized vehicles in nature parks, we actually have been monitoring it, and we have had a few conversations. That will continue into the winter.
Okay.
So Doug has had at least two or three conversations with people that I know of, so.
And our signs are already posted.
Yes, the signs will be posted. I, I don't want to sit here and say that that would, having the trail there would necessarily help your situation, but I think I wanted to let you know they're stepping up the enforcement. We made a couple purchases that allow that to become a little easier.
Okay, good, thank you.
Thank you.
So, to Mr. Raymond's point, maybe I misunderstand the plan, but, so there's currently sidewalk on essentially half of Third Street between B and A Avenue, is that clear?
Correct.
Okay, so the current plan that we're talking about now, would not, so it wouldn't connect with that current sidewalk?
It doesn't go all the way, it would, it comes up to and actually replaces, if you look at, um...
Between Lot Two and Lot Three.
Lot Two, there's actually a small segment that's currently there that leads up to the house that...
Okay, so that's the, okay.
So there is, there's a small portion of the sidewalk that just basically leads up to their house, so the goal being getting it to an existing sidewalk.
Right, okay, that's what I assumed when I looked at the maps, I just wanted to make sure.
However, it's 132 feet. There is additional funding available, given the exact cost.
What is the 132 feet?
Would it, the, the...
The corner, to finish, so...
It would go all the way to A Avenue.
All right, okay, so the current sidewalk right there wouldn't be at the, the current ordinance five-foot width, correct? So we would, is that what I'm hearing? Or am I missing?
We're going six-foot, so you see Lot Two, you see Lot Two, we're going six-foot all the way to what's considered the alley or sheer driveway.
And there would be a gap of half of a property width between there and where the existing sidewalk.
There would be...
And there is the 132.
There'd be, Paul, you guys, is there another house next to you, Paul? Yeah, so there's two homes that are on the corner, Lot Three, you see here, the very edge, and then there's another home next to it that would have, that are not getting trail all the way to A Avenue.
They currently have a four-foot sidewalk.
They currently have a four-foot sidewalk.
But the quest would be is to continue the six-foot trail all the way to A Avenue and dead-end it, or basically meet up with the sidewalk at A Avenue, so that the entrance would be A Avenue versus an alley that is halfway.
Okay, yeah, all right, that, okay, thank you for listening.
32 feet, did you say that?
What do you think, Dave, plan 32 feet ahead?
Well, and do we need to make that ADA compliant right there because it's on a, it's going into the street?
The corner probably would need to be ADA compliant, just like the other ones are.
Yeah, so...
So it might add to the cost as well.
We just would need to know what that, I mean, that's going to add to it, I mean...
It will add to the overall cost. The current, I, what I was basically saying is, the current estimate for the trail that's proposed as well within the money is available for trails.
Wait, is it?
Depending upon the rating and other landscaping items that are located on that property, we're somewhere between seven and $10,000, I would imagine, to add an additional distance.
Does that include the ADA compliance corner?
No, we would, we would have to take a look at that and see if that meets compliance currently, if that has to be incorporated in, if there could be a fair amount of...
Kristen, do you know, do you guys know if that corner is right now, is that one of the new ones or not?
Yeah, I, that's actually hasn't even been...
Yeah, I don't think it has.
I don't think so, given our...
Yeah, no, that's...
...flunk with intersection. Paul mentioned that the existing sidewalk in front of their house is uneven, is that designated to be replaced?
Not yet.
Has it been, has it been...
We haven't gotten that far, so we started in the northwest, we'll move to the northeast, they would actually get to them...
Less.
Year three or four.
The reason I want to ask is because somebody's going to see that, well, look, they, they have a bad sidewalk in there and now the city's going to replace that section and they don't have to put anything, so.
But I think it's justifiable on looking at where this is.
Well, it's true, you don't want it to end in a, you know...
If it's signed as a trail, I think that the pure designation is, do we mark it as an actual trail and part of a trail system, or is it a sidewalk that's never required by code? I know it's a fine line and I know it's been discussed, but...
And I will also bring up again, city maintenance versus rights of the business with regard to, you know, the section that was previously discussed as well as any additional sections, right? If you put up a sign that says, this is six feet wide and a trail, does that mean that the city plows it? And so, every residence that we go in front of, then some other people might not think it's reasonable for them to get their sidewalk cleared at city expense where we have to do our own, et cetera, et cetera.
But, you're right, absolutely. I just want to make sure everybody's aware, we still, we do currently have this existing in the city now. And also the new scoven development will have that as well.
Well, frankly, if it were, if it started at A Avenue, would it be easier for the city to even access it, to do that work anyway, given going through, into the driveway? I don't know.
Are they using a truck or a bobcat for the six-foot or do you put a truck?
Yeah, we've asked each resident for construction easement, so I think mostly 10 or, 10 or 15 feet of construction easement, so.
Yeah, this has a brush on it?
Yeah, so...
Oh, you mean, you mean ongoing maintenance, sorry.
Ongoing, sorry.
Yeah, so I think the cabolet is going to have a brush, right?
Oh, that's...
Yeah.
And let's say there's a big snow, and the city goes through there and clears that path, but the residents don't clear their driveways before that, so then they push the snow and it pushes out across the, the paths, so now does the city come back, or should the residents at least clear those sections that they clogged up? See, there's a lot of thing, now you've got you guys coming back and forth clearing areas that they cleared already. See, they do that really easily.
But to Matt's point, this already exists in the city, so I mean...
But how's that, how's that come?
I, we will go back, I, you know, here the, honestly, we do this now, and, and it goes both ways. You know, the residents fight a typically a losing battle and we're out cleaning streets because they do their driveways and we come back and be, you know, and vice versa when we're on the trail system, so this is kind of a lose-lose situation that, it just depends on, on the year. But we typically, like I said, we, we have somebody that will go out and, and look at the trails, and Nick and Eldon are both fairly active in the latter time, just making sure that everything is open, but we have an expectation in this community that we use the trails year-round. I do believe to your, your point, Marty, that having a set criteria as far as the location of trails and what we're trying to accomplish would probably provide us more significant cover in the conversation between a five-foot sidewalk versus an actual trail as part of the system. Those criteria being established would be a benefit.
Can you explain what the trail will be made of consistency?
Yeah, Barb just asked, can I explain what the trail would be made of consistency? I mean, it's going to be a concrete trail, so I don't know what else, how else to better describe that.
Oh, that's... I was just envisioning somebody trying to plow stones and...
Yeah, I agree. I think, and I went through this when I was chair of parks, right, the word trail makes me think of, you know, mulched paths through a forest, and that's, trail is a, is a parks designation, it's a, you know, it's the width and it's how cities plan recreation through the city, so that they link up, so that you're not going from a wide six-foot where you can have three or four people jogging, you know, abreast, to a four-foot that all of a sudden that issue, so it, I've had that same, you know, thought circulate.
Yeah, it's a great question, Barb, thank you.
So, so I'm just wondering if there's anybody that would support examination, alternative route as far west as possible along the boundaries of the park to get to Ford that and Fourth Street rather than going to one of the residences.
So I would say that when I was driving by earlier this week, I had this thought of, you know, a lot of, I know that when I walk through there, I like to wash through that tree area, and it seems like people are naturally taking that through, they're taking that to go to the dog park, so I, I do see your point, Marty. I feel like we should, and maybe you have already put consideration, I don't, you know, and we talked about the gulf, but, you know, also that first big question.
Could I have a, just a clarification, though, of when we get bids, would, would you like us to include the Fourth Street Southeast connection? Because typically we're trying, we wouldn't dead-end a trail right onto the street, so when we do an alternative number, I want to make sure that we're okay.
Yeah, and that, it occurred to me, and I understand that that just moves this issue, reduces the number of properties related, but it just moves the issue a little more.
It does, and I'm, like I said, I'm probably more concerned with the, the tree removal on the fourth.
Is there clearly a tree there?
Oh, I, if I can, I'll approach.
So, I mean, there might even be some...
Other things you've got to remember is you're working off a paved street, now you're in, in a area where you're going to have the equipment just tearing the heck out of the park.
Is that half block of fourth made of gravel, or is it pin?
It's paved, so...
It's paved right there.
Yeah, it's paved block, that's where we put it.
The reflection is exactly wrong. So, so there, there's a tree there?
There's a number of them.
Those are all in such a place that they have to be removed?
And like I said, you're, you're driving a, you're driving a 60,000-pound submit truck up through here, tearing the heck out of your park to get the concrete there.
Or using a pump truck.
No, no, the cover won't reset. You could, you could buggy it in, but then again, that, the price goes up, so.
We're, we're talking, I mean, if, if it's a council's wishes, we can definitely do an alternative cost estimate that would go that direction. It costs a little bit of Dave's time to come up with a new estimate, but time is worth it based off the discussion.
And, and I mean, this is, I would, if, if, if money weren't an issue, I would pay both, because one of the things that I remember from all of the discussions that we had five and seven years ago about the various trails through town were, you've got a chunk here, and you've got a chunk here, and you've got a chunk here, and those are all great, but then you've got these gaps, right? And, and we've spent a lot of time trying to fill in those gaps, and if we come up third and then we come in behind the houses and we connect to fourth, that's, I, you know, I'm, I'm in favor of that, but we've now created and perpetuated a gap along Third leading up to A Avenue. And so, it would, I would be in favor of looking at both and seeing how, how those play out, but I would, I wouldn't do one or the other, ideally I would do both, to be honest with you, but that's me.
There's thumps out there.
Right, and I can get, you know, if the money tree were in my.
I think of, when, you said, there's about, I believe about a hundred and fifty thousand in upstairs and, and trails money. The issue is that it just doesn't grow very fast, so if you spent, were to spend all one hundred and fifty thousand on this portion, then you would probably take a couple of years to have enough cash.
So is, is that part of lost money is grossed out seventy-five, eighty here? So will you just, kind of?
No, it's been growing longer. It, it, I want to say it's like four or five thousand dollars a month, so probably closer to fifty, sixty.
All right, well, so, and I just, there's an opportunity to say something for the public to remain to some comments from the citizen earlier about spending money on trails and not streetlights?
Yeah.
And since this is an agenda topic, even though it's left, I'd just like to say for the public, this trails money is by our law designated for this kind of construction and cannot be used for streetlights. All the lost funding has dedicated purposes with some generality, but streetlights can never be considered as paved trails on public property. They just can't. So does we have to spend money on this? It's a great opportunity, we're excited about it, and we want to do it in a beautiful, planned way.
Just that's point, I do think about, you know, when you think about small children on a trail, the more you can get it in a loop so that they're not coming down onto the street and having to ride their bikes on the street, there's a, there is a lot of value in that. So, you know, I think whether we do it now or later, it, there's some validity, you know, it's just getting the cost.
Yeah, we, like I said, you know, as long as the council is okay with us spending a little bit more with the, hey, we can come up with a, a B, alternative route, just to give you what, what that segment would be, and here are some of the, the potential pitfalls that the removal of the landscaping would be by. Not having everyone out there to actually look at it yet, I'm making assumptions based upon the location of where those are at right now, that a majority of that would happen.
My other concern with, and, and I'm in favor of Marty's plan, but again, to, to repeat what I said earlier, I would do both, but my other concern was if we just did along the southern edge of Third, come in behind those houses that are right on the edge of, of Nature Park and connect up to Fourth, is now you've got a path that all of a sudden takes a hard left turn. And if I'm a kid on a bike and I want to go over here, I'm just going through people's yards. So I, I think we're, we're creating, we're telling people to head in a direction and then tell them to go a different direction, and I think, so it just, you know, some other, something.
So a stretch of curve, you could repeat.
Maybe around it up.
One turn, you're out.
All part.
I could just share with you at the board level, we discussed, you know, one route, the easiest route that we felt without going through the middle of the park to get to Fourth. And we did not necessarily consider going all the way to A Avenue because it connected to an existing sidewalk, and we were trying to be fiscally responsible so that we have other trails as well that are gonna be on the radar, that we wanted to make sure we had enough money to do as well. So that was our thinking behind that.
We have a couple of different options. Dave explained that there shouldn't be a significant cost, so I think the best thing that we can do since we have a set of public hearings, go ahead and have him put these options together and then bring that back to you and let you kind of review that. My question, we should really, once the alternatives are there, send us back to the Park and Rec Board for their input before we.
I, I'd just like to offer one thing regarding those alternatives. I think us providing that our segment, the city-owned segment of that missing sidewalk along Third Street, the entire length of the park, is valuable at such time as the sidewalk that's to the west of there gets built and we can connect to it. And, and then, you know, that's why I prefer this route of going to that corner and then just going as efficiently as possible to the south, call it southwest, to get to, to where the trail's supposed to be from Fourth Street. I, I do think that's great value, but in my mind, I didn't know that we were considering going any further when we had discussed this before, and that's why, I, I feel like I'm throwing a wrench in front of the plans of the board, which I don't like to do, but, you know, it's just sort of my ideas about what the value proposition is balancing against cost just to match up the full, because I think, so I apologize for any kind of throwing a wrench into that.
No, and I think, to be quite honest with you, I would rather us have this conversation as a discussion item before we've just spent the money to, you know, go through all the paperwork for hearings and bid letting, so that's really kind of why we brought it back. There was just enough questions, I think, on the, the system, instead of moving to project court, come back, we'll get alternatives for you and my partner, right, board, review that and then bring it back.
Yeah, I think there's more than enough support, so.
We had an aggressive construction schedule, but we've since kind of turned that down a little bit based on the discussion with the neighbors, just hearing suggestions, and so we're gonna bring it back in front of you, so, you know, we're trying to get this done before July one, obviously to have, you know, that was one of the goals, is try to get the trail accomplished. So now we've kind of taken a step backwards and evaluated and go from there.
Well, it could probably be done in this construction season.
Yeah, the money doesn't go away, that's the next thing, it's not a fiscal, uh, merely, you know, a budget item, it's a, it's a lost item, so, you know, it won't go away, we just need to make sure we do it the right way.
Thanks, Matt. When you do, when you do that, it's, I'd like to know what the impact is on, on the park itself, because compaction, tearing things up, roots, I mean, you know, there's a, there's a lot of equipment that's gonna be going through there on a six-foot path, so. Not only money, you're, you're tearing up wildlife and trees and all that other stuff, so I'm gonna consider.
All right, anything else?
Thank you.
My name is Sue Gilbert, I live at three nineteen D Avenue, and I just came with questions because the guys who come by and talked, talked with us, and, and I appreciate the discussion because I, one of my questions was, what are the other options that have been looked at? And, and are there any other places in Mount Vernon where a nature trail goes through someone's front yard? Does it exist anywhere else?
To answer your question, yes, in Stonerbrook it does. It's a little bit more challenging in the built environments, specifically what we're talking about here tonight. We don't always have the, the right-of-way width, with utilities to make that happen, but on, on a limited scope, our goal is to try and, in, in this instance, safe routes for kids, funneling them to the, the one intersection that the DOT has given us for them to cross on Highway One, so, a little easier in the newer developments just because we can plan for them before they're actually being constructed, but it, it, you know, it does, does happen.
Yeah, I was just curious to see what you guys have looked at, if you've looked at all these different options, so I really appreciate you discussing it and, and looking at it more specifically, because I, I kind of agree with Stephanie, you know, unless we leave this kind of last year to leave, and we go back. But we, we walk that way with our children, grandchildren, and it's really busy street, so, so yeah, there's need for a place for people to be able to walk definitely, but I was just wondering, just had questions, so thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Anybody else? All right, next item, Fifth Avenue and First Street intersection.
Well, I have some ideas for you, yes. And this doesn't happen very often, but the DOT has signed off on not repairing the intersection at Fifth Avenue and First Street. We know that we have to do the intersection at some point. It would be easier if it was one overall project, make us how many days consistently to get it from basically the wagon pass all the way at least to the start of downtown at one segment, and then the second segment getting through downtown, so. Having talked about this, we feel like it probably makes a lot of sense not to touch the intersection at this point. We'll have to monitor the, the patch that we put in, be just on the east side of the intersection, South Lane. It's probably slightly bigger than this table, there's a patch, if you drive by there, you can definitely see the difference, but we'll continue to monitor that. This project actually won't get constructed, wouldn't get constructed until June of next year. We're trying to avoid kids, and we know how busy that is, so we don't feel like we can get this bid. The lights, custom made?
So you may recall from the project here downtown, but it takes quite a while because you put it in, you put the order in, you wait four months, and then hopefully it's ready, sometimes there's a back order, so we have quite a while from when we approve the drawings to when that is fabricated, and since we're trying to do this at a time when school is not in session, and to try to fit it into a summer construction period, put that in, we obviously can't make this here, so we're looking at putting it out to beds, getting the equipment fabricated, and trying to condense that construction schedule to limit the interference with that intersection to the extent we can, so have everything ready to come in and build it next summer is what we're shooting for for the schedule.
So would we kind of order it like in January? I mean, was it four months, is that a ballpark, or is that kind of your experience? And then we just kind of sit on them to build in delay time, or how did, how would we?
They wouldn't ship them here until they were ready to install them, so it might sit in the manufacturer's yard or wherever they decide.
Because they're made to look old, geeky, and so they're not just sitting in a warehouse ready to ship.
To stay in compliance with the DOT, we need to go through the bid letting because they're, they're paying for the lights themselves, but if we go through the bid and then have a, a start date with a valid reason, they'll say that we're in compliance with the grant application, but this would reduce our cost, the city's cost from two hundred and eighteen thousand, just over, to seventy-one thousand, so significant difference, and knowing that we have the wagon pass, this culvert, and the bridge, whatever we can save and not spend out of the remaining bond proceeds, the better.
Pretty much, for sure.
Kind of action you're looking for, I guess?
Uh, just from a discussion item, I just wanted to clarify that the scope of the project has changed, wanted to make sure you didn't have concerns, but to me, this was good news, I wanted to make sure that you're okay with that as well, and continue with more with the reduced plan.
Okay.
Spend most money, please.
Anybody else have any questions? Next item is, next item is an annexation plan?
So, the next two are on the council's strategic goals, and we're trying to get this done within the next two years, so the next two are just, I'm asking for clarification on these items. So when I see annexation plan, we typically go through the process of, could we get services out there, what would it cost, where should we annex first? There's a lot of nuts and bolts, I guess, that go along with this, but outside of where the interchange would be, I guess I would caution you as far as getting too worked up about annexation in general. And the reason I say that is, we know that there's about a half a million dollars worth of cost because that's what we took out of, or didn't pay the DOT to put pipe underneath the bypass area, so we know that there's going to be close to that amount of money to get services to the south side of where the bypass would be. That's number one. Number two, unless there's a large subdivision out there that we would want to bring in, the individual farm with the farmstead doesn't bring much to the city at this point, and it actually probably leads to more of a detriment for them because they have a ten-year cycle of, when you annex in, it used to be five, five years tax abatement, so it incrementally goes up, they've changed that to ten, but about year four or five, if you have a house out there, is when you start to feel the higher taxes coming into play. So my question is, should we be concentrating less on annexation and more about making sure that the areas where we would annex, as part of the bypass plan, and kind of surrounding to the west, Lynn County has signed off on that so that they continue to kind of enforce our regulations? So we're trying to come up with a fringe area agreement, that's still the process that we were looking at. I would rather pursue, as a staff making recommendation, you to pursue the fringe area agreement versus getting everybody worked up about annexation up there, because when they hear that, they're gonna want to know, when, when we can get services to them, when do we plan on doing this, why are we doing this? Again, if, if there's not a significant population to bring in with more early tax bonds or users for sewer and water, it's okay to, to let that house be there and then annex when we need to future or something.
And I, to me, that is an annex, annexation plan, right? So it isn't just, part of it is just education, I mean, we all theoretically know what annexation means, but what, what exactly does that entail, not only from a city standpoint, but from the resident's standpoint, and so I think to be able, part of it's, I think, educating the six of us, part of it is then taking that education out into the community as we start talking and continue to talk about the bypass, and be able to speak intelligently about fringe area agreements. And, and if we were to annex, here's what that would mean, but we have little to no plans of doing that, and here are the various reasons why, you know, and so to, to just raise the level of education around annexation and the other options, I think to me is part of what an annexation plan means, so, yeah.
So we could provide, and staff can provide a report that will give you that information, so here's how long it tends to take in annexation, what would it entail if we did open that door. There's different rules voluntarily, meaning eighty percent of the land coming in, that still leaves twenty percent of those people that don't want to come in that are coming in regardless. So there's some things that we could put into a report that would give you an opportunity to, I think, to understand and be able to answer those questions. And if, if that fulfills that goal, I just want to make sure that I'm giving the council what it is they were seeking in this document, and it's, when you only have two hours to goal in a goal-setting session, it's, you don't get a lot of time to clarify at that point, so, out of your top six, three or four of them are all in the process right now, so these were the two remaining that we kind of wanted to see clarification on.
Yeah, I think you've heard with us in the past, towns that have annexed too early and then shot themselves in the foot, right, with that ten-year window?
Yeah, I've known communities, I've worked for communities that have gone out and negotiated individual agreements to get people to annex in, right, wrong, or indifferent, nobody tracks those agreements, so some people can burn, some people can hunt, some can't, and then you're trying to track as a staff person how all of that works, and it can be kind of somewhat nightmarish.
I just don't think we're anywhere near that.
I'd like to propose we call it an expansion plan. We call it an expansion plan because that's what it is, and I know, I'm, I mean, coming from a communications background, you have to communicate something seven times to every person, and I'm a little bit concerned about that perception when we see the word annexation, that it's a threat to so many people.
Yeah, I think, I think that's a, that's a great recommendation, and, and it fits well with the idea that there are multiple mechanisms through which the city can exert control. Annexation is the DEFCON three or whatever, right? I mean, that's, that's, that's one end of the spectrum, and there are fringe area is in the middle, and then, and then step one.
Just the two miles, you know, at least you can do.
And step one is, isn't there another one where Lynn County says, yeah, we'll respect your stuff?
So you can exercise two-mile control, which we did within the last year. So that's probably level one, fringe area being two, going all the way to the annexation would be three.
Yeah, and, and, and understanding that and being able to, at the, and I know we speak about it at the, we talk about it at the bypass meetings, and, but, but to Stephanie's point, communicating that outside of the folks that we did in this room, just repeating it, because the annexation is the one that's six in people's minds, right? There are a lot of steps that happen before that's ever written on the table.
And definitely on both sides, I mean, it will scare some that live out there as to, why are you doing this, and then you'll have others that I've personally discussed with in town going, why aren't we annexing out there? So, and being educating, being able to educate on both sides will be a benefit, and like I said. And like I said, um, so internally we'll put some things together and give you a rough draft and see if that's...
And don't, yeah, both once. I mean, don't spend a day and a half on a report. But, but with enough info that we can speak intelligently about it would be fantastic.
Yeah, and, and so, you know, I did receive this last week, the rough draft of kind of a map from Confluence. So that's coming along and like I said, these two will kind of somewhat go inside.
Well, I, I think it would definitely be nice for this plan to, to talk about. And first to track the fringe area agreement thing. I mean, to a certain extent, you could extend this council priority, you could interpret as being, you know, well, at first it's, the priority is the fringe area, right? Even though it says the A word, it really should have been as Stephanie's said.
Expansion, yeah.
Anything else? Chris, go after you.
Yes.
All right. Next one is, uh, one that just won't go away, the old person.
Well, so this one is a little bit trickier because there's conflicting statements within your goal setting. So one talks about just the reuse of the building. It kind of leaves it open-ended to have a discussion about everything. And the other one says reuse by a private individual. So openly marketing this building to somebody outside of the city. So what I wanted to do is just open the door and let you know that the building is used for a lot more currently than I think a lot of people understand. So we, we park all our squads in there. We do have equipment that's parked in there as well. Second, you know, that Matt was able to put together, Chalk the Walk, Heritage Days, there's a few that use that facility as well, Two Full Tuesdays when the weather doesn't hold you. Now, when we build the community wellness center, some of them, like the Two Full Tuesdays, might be able to go there versus this facility. However, Heritage Days is downtown. There's certain events that happen downtown. I have been approached by individuals, both locally and from outside the community, that seem to have a fleeting interest in the building, have an idea what they might do with it. So my point of clarification is, do you want me to actively market this building? Say with Joe so that he can, um, put it out there and bring people through? Or look at an adaptive re, I mean, Chief Shannon and I have, have discussed this notion or idea of potentially using it, reusing it as a police station. I believe that the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar estimate from before is probably going to be closer to like one point two when it's all said and done because you're, you're going to get that building in order to transform it into something. At the same time, there seems to be some confusion. Uh, we recently had a group use it and we don't have the water on over there. It's because the hot water heaters broke twice and we flooded to the point where we've had a river running down the alley. So we had no need for water. We tell people when they get it that there is no water. We do have a contraption that we hook on a hydrant up here that people can get water to. But if it doesn't get communicated to all of the individuals, um, there's confusion there. So, um, you know, we really do want to, to feel like we're meeting the council's objectives here. But like I said, this, out of all of them, this has conflicting statements. And so I, again, we can put it on the, the open market. I, I personally have floated the, the thought of, and a really expensive project to tear it down and rebuilding the parking ground. But again, there's a lot of things that we could do, there's a lot of things we don't have to do.
Well, you know, Chris knows this, but I'll just emphasize it again. You know, I really believe that's a prime location for a public-private partnership that includes first-world commercial and residential. It adds to the tax base, it extends, replaces a lot of the missing downtown buildings that have been lost in fires over the last hundred and fifty or however many years here. You know, I, I just, I don't think that its best use is for some ancillary city functions. I believe that the fire station was envisioned during its creation as a place where the police department could potentially go in the future, right? I believe that Public Works is expanding, you know, in many ways in other areas. City Hall, where the, where the police department not here is probably big enough for administrative functions for another twenty years. And that's a piece of prime real estate to, to add to downtown in terms of residents downtown, which builds foot traffic, adding, you know, people paying property taxes on payroll and putting an attractive building there. And that's, since the beginning of my awareness of its availability, that's been my dream. One contractor began throwing out some numbers and talking to Chris and then backed away. I should say developer, not contractor. But that's just one person. That was the first person that I'm aware of within which was discussed. So that's my personal dream to use of that. That's, that's not putting it on the open market, nor is it, you know, getting another twenty years of city sort of miscellaneous purpose out of it. That's what I would call sort of a very intentional and aggressive pursuit of something beyond the norm and the simple thing, is the city exerting some kind of action through public-private partnership that the intent, TIF, I might add, right, squarely, um, to, to do something really wonderful that adds to downtown more than, well, you know, the Boy Scouts like to use it, et cetera. Well, I'm not saying the Boy Scouts shouldn't have a place to do things or et cetera, right? Fill in the blank. I'm just saying there are a lot of sort of bigger possibilities there.
And I would agree with that and, and as a, as an end goal to the building, the logistics of how we get there, I mean, you know, the police need, I don't know, it's convenient for them to keep the, the cruisers in there. That isn't necessarily needed, although we do obviously need somewhere to store evidence. You know, so I mean, there are some logistical hoops that we would have to jump through. And so I think part of what we need to start discussing is certainly what we want the end goal to be, but, but how we get there, right?
Right.
And what, what those, what those downed ones need to be in the order that they need to be formed.
Well, and just to, to not, to be rude and jump in on that point, you know, as soon as that, people begin squatting, and I use that term very metaphorically, in the term of go and occupy a piece of property and then it becomes yours, squatting, right? When people start squatting, which I think was done to a certain extent in this case, then after a period of time elapses, it's theirs by rights because they've been there long enough, right? I feel like that's the dynamic of what has happened here, right?
It may very well be, but the, the reality is we still need to figure out where we're going to put that evidence. Right, so I mean, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with the history of it. I'm just saying if, if we're going to move the building forward, we got to solve that issue one way or the other. So we've got to start having those conversations.
And to clarify too, um, new cruisers get plugged in at night because all of the electrical equipment that we run on them. So part of moving them in there was, obviously we moved from three to, to five years hopefully as far as the cycle of buying police vehicles. So keeping them in, in a closed building. And we've had this conversation with Public Works as well. The whole reason for looking at purchasing property is to get everything inside the building and elongate its life. But I did want to point out, I mean, they park them in there obviously to, to plug them in inside the building. Completely agree, and Chief Shannon and I have had this conversation frequently is, is downtown the location for the police department? You know, you'd love to because it's kind of Mount Vernon, but as far as the safety issue goes, they should really be moved closer to, um, existing Highway thirty, simply so that they can answer calls.
Figure out a way to accommodate their needs.
Yes. So, and I would agree with, with you Marty, that should we move PD out of here and, and actively look for a space for them to continue operating, this is more than enough space for the administration for at least the next twenty years. We grow typically the, the slowest. So, um, outside of routine maintenance here, I think we'll be fine. My goal, like I said, is, um, we did have one individual, fairly well-known in the development department. And I've had, I, I think more or less he's just extremely busy. So this would be a little bit more of a project that he wanted to take on at the time. This would make, that type of reuse would definitely be a partnership in that the city would have to be included in that process most likely. I just wanted to make sure that if somebody did walk through my door and said, you know, I have an interest in the fire station, I have the ability to go back and say, what are, what's your offer? What are you thinking? What do you need? What do you want to do? Because I don't want to necessarily get rid of a public space for somebody to say, eh, I want to do this eventually. I want, I would rather, if we're going to do it, have a lock, locked-in development agreement with the individual saying, I guarantee that I'm going to have a million dollars' worth of retail and upper story redevelopment here. Then it makes it worth us relinquishing the rights to that property. If they're just going to take it and then potentially rent it out and then maybe do something in the future, then, then I would say it makes no sense for us to, to.
Yeah, that's very practical.
Are there challenges with that house so close next door in terms of what we can do with that space?
Legally, from a zoning perspective? No, because it's, that building's still in downtown and doesn't have any true lock setbacks. However, should they tear that building down or do something? I mean, if I were the property there, I would be concerned.
That's what I mean, yeah. Something to consider too, or kind of keep in mind.
And it really depends on what you do for the redevelopment. If you do, do downstairs commercial and then potentially upper story redevelopment, yeah, there's a good possibility that you'd have to cut out a lot of the interior floor. I mean, it's, much like this is a block building, there'd have to be a lot of work that would need to be done, but...
Do we have a value channel on that building?
No, I could get it appraised, but I, given the current state of it, I probably wouldn't say it's worth seventy-five.
The lot itself is more than enough.
Location, location, location.
Well, Mike, Mike Murray used to say it was worth a hundred and fifty K.
That's what I heard.
It would cost sixty thousand to demolish it and put it in the dump, you know? It's kind of two different ones to look at.
I, I would be hard-pressed to say it's probably worth a hundred and fifty today.
You think?
It's probably a half that.
Okay, yeah, I mean, we, we picked a number, I think, in the transactions with the RFP for, you know, we were sort of working all that out. Likely it's generous.
And, and it's, you know, I'm honestly pulling an arbitrary number. We'd have to truly get it appraised, but I, I wouldn't think it'd be worth anything near a hundred and fifty. The kitchen, most likely, it has, the kitchen area most likely has mold, like I said. The flooding in the downstairs, there's, has led to death measures. I mean, it's a block building, but it's still not immune to mold and anything else, so.
It's not old enough to have asbestos and stuff in it, is it?
No, I, if it were old enough, I, my, my bigger concern would be if it had a tile floor, domestic glue. Kitchen would be about the only area that I can think of that might have that the rest of its concrete. It does have, um, salt, sand, interceptors, two of them, I believe, right? At least two of them.
There's floor drains, yeah.
Floor, yeah. They're completely flooded with sand. I know that because Nick was cleaning them out. But again, you know, cognizant of the fact that people still use it, not just us as a city, but we have gone through some exercises with CDG and kind of tested the market that way a little bit. So I mean, I think at this point I would tell Joe, if somebody is interested, we would definitely listen.
Yeah.
But I believe from a marketing standpoint, it would have to be somewhat specific to, you know, we want to be able to, similar to some of the projects that I've had in the I have City, we want to be able to check your background, make sure that you're going to actually follow through with this project or the building comes back to us.
Well, we want to have it on the private market. I mean, I'm thinking it's kind of been out there, it hasn't been well-advertised, but it's not turned anybody down for it. I want to be able to put a timeline on it so that if nothing happens within a year, then we just cut bait and move on if we realize there's no opportunities for a private, uh, development of the area. I like the idea of protecting our property, our downtown, um, space and so on. But, um, we just need to make a move, do something with that building and it's underutilized now. It's amazing that we utilize now, that's for sure.
Did you get enough of what you need?
Yeah, I think, um, we'll have more conversations internally and then just kind of...
I think we're open for sure, first, yeah. Let's see what's out there.
Okay.
And also the alternative, you said one point two million for, for a police station? But to relocate it, I heard upwards of three to three and a half million, so that's another thing to consider too.
Yeah, you know, again, it's, it's very specific. It depends on what you're building for, but if three to four million dollars for a new police station would probably have drive and pay, then I mean, you could do it for much less. And again, it's, it's all about kind of wishlist versus, you know?
You couldn't do it for less because if you're putting it on thirty, then you have to maintain all of the standards set by the, the new agenda. So you'd have to have brick, you'd have to have everything nicely, nicely. So you're talking three million, I, I'm in the building, you're talking three plus.
Yeah, but I think you have the things you need. And not being very, it just depends on the amount of square footage that we would build. We don't have to have a jail, we don't have to have a...
Which we don't have.
Right, we don't have to have a number of things that would normally come with it, so.
We don't have much now, so. All right, good.
I will say, I'm not, you know, in terms of the events, I'm just going to tell you, having done with the scouts on Memorial Day, they're already looking at going back to the Methodist Church next year. You know, because it's just not having the water.
Yeah, you know, I really, I hate to say it. I mean, I don't, I don't want to discourage people from using it, but I really want to encourage them to go through and understand what it is they're trying to do.
Right, so I'm just telling you, they're, they're already considering that. And I think when I looked at the list of other events, there's, especially given, you know, the, the potential of having something, you know, to the scope of what Marty was talking about, the trade, we will figure out a way to move those, those activities elsewhere.
So maybe Southern Common, I mean, that'll be a perfect location.
Right, well, well, you can make other plans for those things. But we also have to make other plans for what's being, it is being used for now. So there's just, it's just getting through that.
Correct.
All right, anything else? All right, reports, anything, anything council committee, anything to share? Chris, I know you have a short report yourself. Anything to highlight?
No, we're gonna, we're reviewing the associate planner position applications now. It is, I, I mean, it's very heavy female, which is intriguing for me. This is the first time, I think, in my career that I've seen that, so almost seventy-five to twenty-five percent.
Two things I want to mention is that, I think the Ray Barrel program going again. I'm going to get more contact down with Ace Hardware to get that and then get it something in the paper about it because I've had some calls about it already. The Presbyterian Church's offering to subsidize that again. The Catholic Church parking lot is moving forward. So that's going to impact some street parking, some, you know, several months of construction and so on, access facilities and things like that. Although there'll be peripheral issues with the city as it relates to that.
Is that the second level?
Both levels.
Oh, okay, all right.
So a bit more lighting and convolvers, so.
Definitely needed.
Staging hopefully beginning of June, seven, whatever, two weeks from today, I guess. So that's, don't you think that?
I just want to publicly thank City employees and Nick for their contribution to Southeastland Community Gardens. You know, uh, they were in a bind on how are we going to get this thing done? And I said, call Chris. And my understanding is it's planted. So Nick, do you know more than I do? Have a more recent update?
I did see pictures of it planted.
Yeah.
Just kind of sent that on to Lynn County and they, Lynn County, Lynnville donated the capos and M and K donated the hauling, so it's pretty awesome.
I have, I know, I'm just going to show it, M and K too, so. It was just a great example of, hey, can you help us out? And they've been making a good call.
What, what that project?
Community Garden for Southeast Lynn, yeah. So to, sorry, I should have done a back story, to complement the food thing, you know, because people are getting canned goods and packaged goods. And in order to give them more helpful choices, um, Community Garden would provide that. And then they're also thinking about offering some courses and food reservation and those sorts of things too, so.
By proclamation, it is pollinated.
That's right.
Anybody else have anything? Chris, good? No further business, please.
I figured, thank you for the discussion. Thank you for throwing dirt at me.
Thank you. Give it one of our own.
I didn't have to throw dirt.
I'll throw it in. I figured.
I'll leave that up here today. You know, this is, I. Thank you for the discussion.